Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's second Finance Committee meeting of the month. We're going to begin with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. While I'm pulling up my agenda, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I apologize it's taking me a second here. All right. Finance and join the meeting. Okay. This meeting is being videotaped for the community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to allow time for all of those who wish to speak to the board. Board President may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, unless there's any recommendation to do otherwise, we're going to move on to items recommended for our action and discuss the tax rebate program.
Well, Mr. Fusco, with your permission, could we move into the informational items? We do have some presentations here tonight.
Absolutely, certainly.
If that's okay?
For sure.
Just like last week's meeting, we do have departmental budget presentations this evening. Tonight, we have the curriculum presentation, elementary and secondary education. So to lead things off tonight, we have Dr. Deanna Waters is going to deliver the curriculum budget address.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so I'd first like to start with just kind of letting you know who is in. I feel like this is really loud. Is it too loud? I feel like I'm already loud without it. Okay. Like to first start with just letting you know who makes up the curriculum department. So I'm Deanna Waters, as you know, Director of Curriculum and Equity, and we have six supervisors. So we have a supervisor for STEM, Keddie Kaminsky. We have a humanities supervisor, Rachel Early. We have Nina Fenstemaker, who is our ELA and secondary reading supervisor. Sean Arnie just came onboard in December as our elementary math and science supervisor. And then we also have Lori Ho, who's a principal at York Avenue. She serves as the social studies elementary supervisor. And then our professional learning and content area supervisor is Jackie Giammarco. In our department, we do have some learning coaches. We have two ESL coordinators. Andrea Bowers is a teacher over at Hatfield Elementary, but she also is the ESL chair for the elementary department. And Lauren Mitchner works at our high school, and she takes care of the secondary ESL students. Meg Burke is our secondary literacy coach. Ron Martiello is an elementary math coach. And Rachel Burt is our elementary literacy coach. And then the support that we have in the department to kind of help us get all of this accomplished, my secretary, Tanya Garrahan. Sue Barron, she serves as secretary to a couple of the supervisors, and she also does a lot with helping Title, with Title I and those programs, Mary Jo Coyne and Peggy Denninger. So basically, in the curriculum department, we really focus on curriculum instruction and assessment, also equity and access. So this is just a real general slide to kind of just let you know that we take care of curriculum K-12. We make sure that everything that we're doing is aligned to the state and national standards so that we're preparing our students for college or careers. We take care of all of the curricular resources and materials. We have our resources for instruction. We definitely make sure that we are getting things that are research-based and best practices for our students. We provide programs for our families so that they can understand some of our curricular areas. We have translation and interpretation services for ESL families. A lot of our families, maybe if they can't communicate with their teams at schools, we have TransPerfect, which is the phone system that they can use. Sometimes they even use them in meetings and things like that. We also can get things translated when we need to. The Title II, III, and IV programs come under curriculum and also summer programs. And then as far as assessments, we have several assessments, about 500 curriculum-based assessments that are on Lincoln. This chart just gives you an overview. This is in the executive summary as well, but just to highlight the big areas that make up our budget of over $5 million. Big difference from coming from Hatfield Elementary when it was a lot smaller, so I'm getting used to these numbers. But if you look at the first line, that kind of takes in our hourly wages and benefits. The next one is curriculum materials and resources. A lot of the budget goes to salaries for people in the curriculum department and their benefits as well. We also take care of the department chairs' salaries and benefits. So all of the department chairs, whether they're at the high school or the elementary level that oversee, you know, all of the different areas, we take care of that. The equity piece we added this year, it was coming out of another budget, but it kind of now makes sense to come out of this budget with being curriculum and equity. The federal programs, Titles II, III, and IV, again, come out of this budget. The interpretation services that I spoke of. And professional development is huge. So induction as well with our new teachers and getting them up to speed and training them throughout the year is also part of curriculum. And then finally, student programs. So again, all of those things total the five, over $5 million budget in curriculum. As far as areas of focus, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that are kind of the big items this year or going into next year. So all the time in curriculum, we're always thinking about how we can get better with increasing student achievement and making sure that all of our students have equal access and opportunities. So that's something that's given every year. We also make sure that we really are focusing on hitting the kids young and the foundational skills, making really sure that our core curriculum is tight. And also, we have really been training more and more teachers to be culturally proficient and also making sure that we have cultural proficiency goals, and all of our schools are supporting that work with their goals. Specifically to some of the things that, again, are a little bit costly in this budget are STEM. So under math, we do need elementary Go Math resources. We're kind of at the point where we need to replenish and get some of those things so that we can get through next year. Next year, we'll really be undergoing curriculum review in math. Our math supervisor has already started working with a focus group, so next year, they'll get to the point probably about this time next year when I present, we'll be kind of talking about materials for the following school year. But until we get there, we do need to replenish what we currently have. The Edgenuity software is also one of the bigger ticket items under that area. In secondary science, we're moving to Integrated Science VIII. This year, they started Integrated Science VII, and so now moving into the next year, Keddie will need to be purchasing more resources and materials for that grade level. Under ELA, for English Language Arts, we have been using foundations in our kindergarten program, and it's a really great structured program to help our students get those foundational skills, help them with phonemic awareness and phonics. And we're looking at the data, and we're really seeing some great results. And so what we want to do is bring that into first grade next year as well. So that's another area that's reflected in the budget. We also continue to buy resources and things for the other grade levels in elementary schools so that they're continuing to work on the rigor and the higher-order questioning and things like that. English VII also needs materials and resources for their course. And then in social studies, as you know, we're now moving to world cultures and geography in seventh grade, and we added the African-American Studies course up at the high school. So we will need materials for those areas as well. Under world culture, Spanish is our most popular language, and in Spanish, we definitely need to replenish materials in Spanish I and Spanish II. So doing that at the same time also helps us save a little bit by getting them all in one purchase. And then finally, under special content areas, I just wanted to mention for all of our librarians, they've been given some money to really focus on getting more diverse books into the libraries. And so there's another expense. I wanted to just share quickly some of our cultural proficiency efforts as that falls under curriculum as well. One of the things that we've been doing for several years, as you know, is working with consultant Dr. Barbara Moore Williams. So her fee is up there at about $10,000 a year. This year, we started a new cadre at the high school. We wanted to really try to make it a little bit more convenient. We were finding that we didn't have as many high school teachers participating because she typically starts at 4:00. And so now, we have a session just for them, and students attend as well, and it starts at 2:15. And so we're seeing some really great results and work there. We also use Dr. Barbara Moore Williams to help train our teachers at all levels. So we have a new cadre this year, so teachers who were not trained with her in the past attend that. And then we also have a veteran cadre group that meets with her, and they've been coming for years, and they've been a really great resource back at the building level to help then train, you know, the rest of the staff. Salaries and benefits to support the teachers who are part of the cadre is about $9,000. This year, we also brought in Dr. Eddie Fergus, and he has been working a lot with the administrative team as well as the high school, in particular on disproportionality. And so that PD and his training is about $32,500. We also started a student ambassador group this year, and we're partnering with the NAACP and some other neighboring districts, Upper Dublin, Narstown, and Sheltonham. North Penn recently hosted the first student ambassador group, and Cassie back here is a part of it. We will tell you a little bit more about that next month at ECP, but I did want to mention that that is something that falls under these efforts. And we also started a parent group this year, and we are looking for them to be our allies around equity. And finally, I just wanted to share a couple of the things that we've been doing to kind of help save some money in our budget. We always make sure that we take inventory to make sure that everything that we are purchasing is accurate. We're using a blended approach, so we do have physical texts, but we also have some digital learning. And the other thing that we do is really make sure that we are using our texts as long as we can. We're trying to get like the full adoption out of everything. We're really working hard to get competitive quotes before we purchase anything, and if we can, you know, get those quotes approved prior to, you know, board approval, we've been doing that as well. So those are some of the things that have kind of helped us to take this budget, you know, down a little bit. And we also really went line by line with each supervisor to look for things that maybe didn't need to be there anymore, maybe needed to be reduced based on trends from the past several years. And that is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Just for your information, also posted in Board Docs is a one-page executive summary as well as the line-by-line detail of the curriculum budget.
I have one question.
Okay.
In the translation expenses, does that include NOREPs for IEPs, or is that something that comes out of the special education budget?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm going to ask, it is in, yeah, it is in ours.
It is in yours.
It is in this one. I wasn't sure if it was in special ed, but it's curriculum.
The reason that I ask is through a policy conversation with Dr. Bowers and Mr. Summers, we had a conversation a couple weeks ago about the reality of trying to translate an entire IEP. But what we did discuss, though, was probably the most consequential part of the IEP is the present levels section of it. And we were wondering, I was wondering, about investigating what that expense might look like to look at that particular section in addition to the NOREP, figuring that, I mean, even if you could, obviously you wouldn't know exactly how much for page by page, but if it is three times the length of a NOREP or something like that, what might the additional expense be to your budget to get those specific, that specific document translated as well? Because I think that's the most useful information for a parent.
I agree. And I can certainly look into what that would cost and get back to you on that, because I do think, I know when I was still at Hatfield, that was something that we really tried to focus on if we were translating, because you're right, sometimes, you know, trying to translate every single thing in there can be really hard, but you certainly want to highlight those present levels. So we can find that out for you. Okay? Thank you.
I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And this might be a question because it appears it's maybe happening more at the high school or middle school, but the Dr. Fergus, the, what you're working on with him, is that going to be presented at ECP along with cultural proficiency next month?
We can include that.
Yes. If you could include what's kind of the fruits of that.
Okay.
From the high school in terms of where we're going with that, recommendations, and kind of the work product that's coming from that. And then administrative training, how many times has that happened this year between Dr. Fergus and Dr. Barbara Moore Williams?
I would say three. He was actually supposed to come last month, but he had a family emergency, so we'll look to reschedule that. But Dr. Moore Williams actually just did a training with Admin at our January meeting. I'm sorry, February. February? We're in March. No, January.
Is it, it was February?
Even no. It was a couple weeks ago.
No pressure, you're being taped.
I know. It's just really like awkward.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. We're just going to make you walk away.
I know. Need to get my steps in anyways.
I think we've really appreciated seeing the cultural cadre, like the strategic plan, and that was so helpful for us to understand the details and everything that goes into that group, and it was so fantastic. And I'm wondering what efforts are in place to evaluate the work of the cultural cadre, and are we measuring and tracking impact and how it's being reflected back into schools, how teachers are applying it? Are we, are we doing any kind of formal evaluation?
That's a really great question. I would say we don't have a formal evaluation, but we do now with having goals and things like that built into each school, there is an opportunity for, you know, principals to kind of have some look for as far as like what they're seeing in the classroom. We're going to be doing some more training with the teachers, and so some of it is going to be evident through, you know, when you as a principal like do an observation, you can kind of look for, am I seeing things that are, am I seeing culturally responsive practices as they're, you know, differentiating and working with students? We just did equity walks when Dr. Barbara Moore Williams was here, and we're going to be doing that with the teachers. So they'll have an opportunity to kind of do some self-assessing, but also with their colleagues as well. But we certainly can talk about something more formal at our next Executive Committee meeting. I think that's a great idea. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waters. Next up, we have Dr. Elizabeth Santoro, who's going to cover the elementary education budget. Dr. Santoro, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I first started off just going through some of my responsibilities in the department, and the first thing is supervising the elementary principals. That's a major part of my responsibility, providing coaching and support and instructional practices, and also helping them to become problem solvers and to work with them when they have difficulties in the schools or challenges. Also, to work through data analysis and monitoring progress, mentor to all the principals, but especially the newer principals that are onboard or first-year principals. We meet monthly just to make sure that we're staying on top of all the items and tasks and everything responsible for a principal. And then also, working with the principals on professional development, boy, I'm tongue-tied tonight, to enhance leadership. So that's all under elementary principals and my role there. And next piece is our continuation of MTSS, which is the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and we put that model in about three years ago, and that's been very successful. It's been working very well in our buildings. So it's continuing with making sure that we're implementing that with fidelity and also providing those enrichments and intervention that the students need. The third piece that's under my department is K-12 and centralized kindergarten student registration. That falls under my domain, so I work closely with the registrar. I also work closely with a lot of our secretaries that come in and support us during the heavy-volume time for registration for kindergarten and then also in the summer. Also, I bulleted there that I am the LEA for the McKinney-Vento, which is our students who are displaced families. I am the point of contact, and I work directly with our two homeschool visitors. I also oversee the transfers of attendance for families that are requesting those at the elementary. We average about 100 to 120 per year for transfers of attendance. The majority are for daycare reasons that they need to have the transfer. And then also, I'm the point of contact for foster care, K-12, and I work closely with Montgomery County, Chester County, the local counties, Philadelphia, when we have students in and out of foster care. Some of the things that I'm working on this year is continuation with our kindergarten, our full-day K. We implemented it, but this year is also looking at making sure that we're implementing it with fidelity. So this year, it's great that I've had the opportunity to be in a lot of our kindergarten classrooms. I think I've been in about 30 of them so far to actually see what we're doing and hold true to what we're doing. And a big piece to that was what Dr. Waters mentioned, our foundations reading program, which is really going well in our schools, and then also our responsive classroom, which is another big aspect. We still continue to have our FDK steering committee, because I think even though you're in implementation, you need to pull the team, your steering committee together. We've had two meetings, looking forward to things that we need to tweak and we need to monitor and adjust. And then also providing the ongoing professional development for our teachers, which is really job embedded. Our coaches spend a lot of time, our early learning coordinator, working directly with our kindergarten teachers. And then the second thing I wanted to bullet on this page was our PBIS initiative. I'm proud to say that you can see the schools listed there. We have Nap in year three, Oak Park, Inglewood, Culp in year two, Montgomery, Gwinneora, North Wales, and Bridle Path are in year one. Year one is always the readiness phase because it's the full year of training where they have five full consortium days. And then next year, we're going to onboard four more schools, and then the following year, our last school. So two years out, we should have all 13 elementary schools trained and implementing this framework. Partnership with the coaches from the IU, they've been great working with us. We have a district-wide team, we meet quarterly. That involves all the school principals that are involved in PBIS, our Director of Special Education, Transportation, Food Services. It's a real collaborative effort. We also have a community member that sits on that team. And then we know about Second Step, which is our social skills curriculum that we've implemented a few years ago. So I just listed the folks that are my responsibility, and then I supervise the 13 principals on the left-hand side, and then you can see on the right-hand side, all the other folks that comprise this department. So the next piece, I just want to go into my budget. My budget is roughly about $1.3 million, and the majority of my budget really encompasses salaries and benefits. So I listed all the folks that we pay out of my budget, my position, homeschool visitors, the registrar, my assistant, the early learning coordinator, substitute secretaries to assist with registration, intervention, which I'll get into, a little bit of transportation costs for in-district transportation, and also professional activities for music. So intervention, you can see the amount of money there that we, that I have budgeted next year for intervention, and that's across all 13 elementary schools, and that's to support students in reading support and also in math, and that's really through the RTII model of Tier II and Tier III. And what we do is we hire assistants that will come in, and they're paid to provide that service to the students. So it's really an important initiative that we have. We've been doing it for years, and intervention, as you know, is extremely important to make sure we're meeting the needs of kids. The music professional activities, this really is to pay for our music teachers, for their core groups and also their select groups. So what this is, is it's compensation for any work over their contractual day. So when they have their rehearsals in the evening, their concerts in the evening, all of that has to be compensated for. Then in addition to that, we give all of our teachers an opportunity to have select groups. So some music teachers might have a select jazz band, some might have a select wind ensemble. So we have money set aside for that so that they can work with kids on that. So it varies from building to building. And then also, we do use outside folks to assist and play the piano when we do have concerts. Years ago, it used to be kind of hit or miss on how we had folks come in to do that, but we streamline that, and we have that through a contract. And then the transportation wages, that's for, once again, with all of our music programs, our schools are joint groups for an orchestra or band, so then we have to return students back to their homeschool after practice in the morning, so that pays for that inter-district travel. And then also, our trips for, our transportation for planetarium trips that all of our students go to two, three times a year, every classroom across all 13 elementarys. So that's the transportation cost. And then some other funds, mileage, supplies, books and periodicals, and professional development, which is very small amounts of money. And that's my budget. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Santoro.
Thank you.
Dr. Santoro, don't go too far. You're presenting later tonight, right? Okay. So next up, we have Dr. Bauer, who's going to present the secondary education budget. Welcome, Dr. Bauer.
Thank you, Mr. Scrackey. Good evening, everyone. And before I begin, I think I'd be remiss, for those of you that didn't have the opportunity to attend the oratorical competition the other evening, JoJo was an outstanding competitor on, I guess it was Thursday evening?
Thursday.
So, great job, JoJo.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was very proud of you. Of course, we had to throw the Hatfield plug.
Hatfield was well represented, so.
Yes. So while I would love to stand up here and say, saving the best for last, I will say, saving the most brief for last. I'm in the advantageous position that the secondary budget is quite limited because of some of the things that you heard from some of the other folks and other people that are presenting in the future. So, just to begin, I primarily supervise secondary schools as a whole. So Dr. Santoro shared her role as Director of Elementary. I do that with the secondary schools. Also supervise a North Penn Virtual Academy and our security team. A lot of overlap with a lot of the folks here. Program of Studies, while it falls under curriculum, I work a lot with our curriculum supervisors in all things graduation-related and Keystone and Assessment and Linkit, Data and Assessment. And I work with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Scrackey on facilities-related items, Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider, and then athletics. So just some of the high-level things that I supervise. In terms of a budget summary, I have a 6.3, roughly $6.3 million budget, almost 4.3 of which is allocated towards North Monco. So the way that North Monco, our technical career center, works their budget is they take their total budget, and then it is per people. So we represent this year roughly 45% of the students at North Monco. Last year, it was roughly 42%. So you can see a huge chunk of my budget is North Monco Technical Career Center. Other things that come out of my budget in the large chunks, and we've made a dramatic decrease in the spending for North Penn Virtual Academy. If you recall, I presented last year with Mr. Hassler on a way that we could shift how we do our virtual programming. So instead of when our students in the North Penn School District attended our cyber school, we subbed that out to the IU. This year, we actually purchased our own site license, so we run our own virtual academy instead of utilizing the intermediate unit. So as a result, we have teachers at Northbridge that are teaching the students who are in our RISE program and need some supports that they can't necessarily provide at the other secondary schools, but then they also have a caseload of students who are virtual students. So if you take a look there, I said the cost per student. Mr. Scrackey and I did a rough calculation because the year's not over and the enrollment in our virtual academy kind of ebbs and flows a bit. But including our guidance counselors, our administrators, our teachers, and the site license, which is $100,000, we're estimating that we're spending about $3,700 per student in our cyber academy, whereas if they were to go to a charter cyber, such as 21st Century Charter, the cost to the district would be, I believe, about $14,000 a student, and if they happen to be a special ed student, it would be $35,000 regardless of the disability. So we are able to educate them in our virtual programming for about $3,700. Yes, Mr. Fusco?
I'm just curious, is that cost in addition to what a typical cost is per student in the district, or is that the sole cost to educate?
So it is solely based upon the staffing and the licensing that we have at Northbridge. So then, a cost per course, there are some courses where we don't have a teacher at Northbridge to be the teacher of record. For example, we don't have a Spanish teacher at Northbridge. So if we needed someone to, if a student wanted to enroll in Spanish, then we need to utilize the IU for that. So then we're paying almost à la carte. So it's $880 for a year-long course for that course. So there are some numbers of the total number of students. We're hoping to increase those numbers through our virtual academy because we really think we can offer a great program there, and our students can earn a North Penn diploma. Next slide, please. The next largest chunk is- The next largest chunk is our Title I federal program. So we are allocated roughly $1.1 million through Title I, and we choose to utilize those funds to support our students with, our schools at the elementary level with the highest need. So the highest percentage of free and reduced lunch, we have six elementary schools that receive Title I funds. Those supports are primarily through math and reading intervention. Then we have our Ready to Learn grant, which is about half as much, and it's $577,000. And through that is a lot of our learning coaches. I believe you heard from our learning coaches, whether that was the spring or the fall, it's kind of all blending together. But we utilize our learning coaches, and we use the funding through Ready to Learn. And we also provide math intervention at the tune of roughly $40,000 at the middle level through Ready to Learn. And then finally, I believe we have our summer school program here, which we shifted and reduced spending the last couple of years as well. At the high school, they're doing a hybrid program now where the students come two days a week to get support, and then two days online. So our, and last year, there was some, kind of a startup cost there, so I'm hoping that this summer, it will be a little bit better. But they, the students come on Tuesday, Thursday, and they are home Monday and Wednesday. And then some support intervention hours over the summer as well. So those are our two summer school programs, and that is it. So when I said best swapped for brief, there's, of the 6.3, 4.3 is North Monco, and then 1.1 is Title I, and then there are some other much smaller expenses. Questions?
Ready to Learn grant is state-funded or federal?
That is state-funded. There were some questions last year. We talked at this meeting that they were hoping that it would be part of our regular allocation, but that didn't, I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but that didn't materialize. So we applied, just like we did last year. We were hoping that would be part of our general funding.
Could you talk a little bit about restorative practices and where, if that's included somewhere in the budget and we just didn't see it, and what that's going to look like for definitely Pendale, but the middle school, where middle school's high school, how that's going to material?
So it is budgeted, but it is not in my budget. This would fall under Mr. Dur. So we applied for some Safe Schools grants. And the plan right now, we sent seven individuals to be trained initially in restorative practices. They did that the first week in December, and then they have to implement restorative practices in their classroom for a period of time, which is roughly three months. Then in the spring, it's actually scheduled for May, we have the International Institute of Restorative Practices, IIRP, coming here to North Penn to train those folks to be, train the trainers, so that they can start rolling it out larger scale. So right now, there are seven individuals trained at the middle school level, and once they are certified, in addition to Mr. Hassler, who was already trained because they implemented this at North Bridge when he was the principal there. So those seven folks, plus Mr. Hassler, we're going to have a trainer come here in May, and then we can start to train the teachers. So, but Mr. Dur will present about that.
Okay. And you'll tell us more at ECP about what that will look like?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, question?
Nope.
Right in the nick of time. Just for some context, when I'm looking at the virtual aspect, just pull that slide up. For how many years have we been paying that $14,000 and $35,000? Has that been, is that a recent number, or Mrs. Skrocky? I've been understanding, because it seems like a great value that North Penn School District is providing to our local taxpayers as opposed to the rate that's been set by the state. So for how long?
That rate is actually North Penn-specific. So that number gets recalculated every year based on our actual expenses. So I think the range in Pennsylvania goes somewhere around $7,000 or $8,000 all the way up to $21,000. So ours is $14,000 for the current fiscal year. So it's been escalating, but it does get recalculated every year.
For all students?
For all students, right.
Not the cost of what it costs us to provide cyber education. It's a cost for all students.
And so that, where I was, my next question is, we've got 85 students currently versus what we have with the competitors, are we able to calculate a ballpark figure as to how much we're saving each year?
I don't know, out of the 85, how many were previously in cyber schools? We'd have to have that data to be able to determine what the actual savings are.
Or perhaps you might say, those that are doing it here versus if they would be going to?
Correct.
I got you.
I think that'd be a very interesting number to share with the public in terms of savings for local taxpayers.
I do know that Mr. Galante, who is the program director over at North Bridge, is planning an open house and advertising to those folks who are attending other cyber charters, so living in the North Penn District but attending, let's say, Agour, 21st Century, to kind of appeal to them and show them what we can offer. I believe our expense right now, Mr. Skrocky, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you shared that it was about $2.2 million for cyber schools this year for students, and if we can bring some of those students back to North Penn at this rate, obviously, it would benefit us, and we believe that we can provide an outstanding education there with our teachers, live teachers, that they can come and get office hours, support every day.
And that also, I think reinforces what I learned from Dr. Santoro, with fidelity. It's something that I think some of the private charters may have difficulty explaining that statement when they describe their services. So I think it's very important for North Penn and our community to understand not only the value, but the quality of the education, get that North Penn diploma. So I really want to commend the administration for having this type of solution.
And I think it's important to note, too, as part of the governor's budget address just last Tuesday, he proposed some additional charter school reform, and one of the components, which is projected to save $133 million back to local school districts, is to establish a set rate for all cyber schools at $9,500 per student. So gone would be the days of these individual school district calculations, gone would be the $14,000 per North Penn student. It would be set at a flat rate of $9,500. What the studies have shown is that the cyber schools are able to charge that amount for a specific district, but it doesn't come close to, or I should say, the charges are well in excess of what their actual costs are. And that money, then, is being used for additional advertising for the cyber school. So that was part of the governor's reform proposal. The second part, which is projected to save $147 million, so a total of $280 million in savings, is to actually calculate the special education portion for those students that are attending that have an identification, that the calculation wouldn't be a flat $35,000, it would be based on the exceptionality that the student has, or, and would be based on the tiers. There's like three different tiers of classification right now, special education. So the funding would be based on whatever classification the student has. So speech and language, for example, which doesn't require as intensive dollars, would result in a lesser dollar amount being sent to the charter schools. So again, that's $147 million in projected savings, 280 total. So part of the governor's budget address, we'll see what actually happens by the time the final budget is passed. And I did see a projected savings for North Penn. If both of those components would be implemented, our projected savings over $300,000 next year.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Clearly, the legislature needs to take action to address these two issues. I can't be even, you know, more clear about that to those watching at home, those who may be reading the paper tomorrow about this meeting, but clearly, the legislature needs to take action regarding fees that are being charged to public school districts for cyber charters, and regarding the special education charges that are being put on local school districts. It's wrong, and it needs to be addressed.
All right. At this time, unless you have another plan, we will move on to the real estate tax rebate program?
Yeah, thank you. This continues our conversation that we had at the last month's finance committee meeting, and I'd actually like to start right in the middle of kind of where we left off last time. So we're at a 30% rebate this year. So the discussion was surrounding what to do with that 30%. Do we change the 30%, keep it the same? Another component of that was these supplemental rebates that are offered by the state. So if an individual pays a large amount of property tax in relation to their total income, they are eligible for supplemental rebates also, beyond the base rebate, and they can be up to 50% of the base rebate. So the maximum rebate anyone could receive from the state is $975 total, 650 base amount and another $325 through the supplemental. North Penn, as part of our program, we have not included supplemental rebates as part of our calculation of the 30%. So the discussion we had last time was, let's take a look at the data. What do supplements generate in North Penn School District before we consider that? As a reminder again, too, we include renters this year, we include that hybrid group where there's a partial property owner and partial renter, and then a 30% straight amount for the individual property owners. So I wanted to share with you the data for the supplemental information. That appears on this chart here. We had a total of 1,572 property owners that were eligible for the rebate program through the state, and 658 additional individuals received a supplemental rebate. So supplemental rebates totaled $129,000 in additional dollars at the state level, $527,000 in base rebates. It's important to note that supplements are not available for renters, since this is all based on your property tax paid as a portion of your income. So the supplements, again, only apply to owners, not to renters. So based on a couple assumptions, then, I want to take a look at what if we actually considered including the supplements for next year? So we took a look at it two different ways. One, with no supplements, what the budget impact would be, and one with supplements. So for example, if we assume a 50% participation rate next year, and we keep our rebate amount the same at 30%, without any supplements, we'd be pretty much where we're at today with $141,000 in our budget. If we would increase that to 40% reimbursement rate, for example, that would add roughly another $47,000 to the budget. And then, of course, if you go to 45 or 50, that would add additional dollars to the budget, as with no supplements. If we added supplements, you're roughly adding about another $40,000 in budget amount. I'm sorry, roughly another $20,000 in budget amount for each tier of rebate. So again, if we keep the rebates at 30%, the budget amount would rise to $160,000. So again, in rough numbers, it would add about $20,000 to the budget to include supplements next year for the 2021 fiscal year for the first time. If the increase, or the rebate amount changed from 30% to 40%, then our budget amount would go from $141,000 to roughly $214,000. So about $70,000 increase of the budget to ratchet up the rebate percentage, plus include the supplementals. So the theory, again, with the supplemental rebates are, first of all, we're dealing with those individuals that most are most in need to begin with financially, and then, secondly, those individuals that pay a large percent of their property taxes as a percent of their total budget. So I think the philosophical question here is two-part. A, to include supplements for next year, and B, do anything with the 30% reimbursement amount that we currently have in place. We did raise the rebate amount from 25% to 30% this year, so it has increased in our second year, and clearly, we're not getting that 50% participation rate, even though that's our target. We're probably going to be lucky if we hit a 40% total participation rate this year. So even though we have, you know, roughly $121,000 budgeted this year, in all likelihood, we won't spend that amount. So as individuals now are starting to file their tax returns, you know, we feel it's important to get a recommendation to the full board. If we could, at the February action meeting, that way we can communicate to our local legislative offices what the rebate amounts are going to be for the 2021 year. We can update our application process, our forms and so forth. That way, when individuals seek assistance at their local legislative offices, they can handle the state rebate and the North Penn rebate at the same time.
Mr. Skrocky, other question. My son got his tax bill, and he had a letter from the local tax collector in there, and they had the rebate for the state reference in there. I don't recall from seeing my own tax bill if there was a letter from the tax collector. Are we, in an effort to increase participation, can we request that our tax collectors put something about the North Penn program in the letter, or do they already? I haven't noticed.
We did. We did request that, and I believe the majority of the tax collectors do put a little blurb in, or supplemental page in about our rebate program.
Okay. And can you, I'm sorry, can you explain to me the supplemental, how you qualify for that again?
Okay. So the supplemental, it's based on your property taxes paid. If it reaches a certain percentage of your overall income, then you're eligible for the supplemental rebates. Now, what that percentage is, I can't answer that because it's not even part of the state publication. It basically says that if you qualify for the supplements, we'll give you the money. We'll let you know if you're eligible. So in the documentation and the instructions in the application process, it doesn't actually identify what that percentage is. So I'm not sure if it's 50% of your income, or 40%, or 30%. What we see, though, when individuals make their application in North Penn, we see that they receive the supplement because it's something in excess of the base amount that would be, that they'd be eligible for just based on income alone.
Okay. Just trying to figure out how to explain that to people when we go out, like we usually do. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Skrocky, could you remind me the approximate percentage of rebate receivers here in North Penn that are renters?
Sure. Let me back up, and I have an earlier slide.
Thank you, it's a small percentage. Thank you very much. I tend to think that if we increase any of the money that is available for rebates, it would be a positive step for us to take to avoid adding that additional funds to the supplemental available funds, and focus on a percent increase that both renters and homeowners would be able to access. I know that the renters community are only 7% of our applications at the moment, but I think that we could probably do some more to get those numbers higher because I think there's a lot more renters that qualify for this program that would benefit from it. And so I'll just, for the sake of starting the conversation, illustrate that I'm a little bit more behind a flat percent increase than I would be the addition of a supplement.
Just one note on the renters, too, that a renter's income has to be $15,000 or less. So the income thresholds are even lower. There's only two tiers of income threshold for renters, four tiers for property owners.
Mr. Skrocky, has the supplemental program been implemented anywhere else in the state as part of rebate program by the district?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Are there any obstacles or additional challenges that we may not foresee? I mean, you predict what we don't know, but are there any other considerations that we should be aware of with the supplemental program being implemented?
I don't think so. From an administrative standpoint, with processing of applications and so forth, I mean, it would be pretty seamless. If we do include supplements, that would be just a straight percentage calculation on the total amount of the check. Right now, that's not necessarily the case because we don't include the supplement. So from a processing standpoint, I don't see any hurdles.
And thank you. I just wanted to, due diligence, make sure I asked that. Last question for now, just on the history of the program over the past two years, I'll make sure I'm not assuming this, but confirming that the rebates have outstripped what the Act I index has meant for an increase to renters or homeowners. So we're offsetting or putting additional dollars in the pocket of a taxpayer?
Correct.
Thank you. What was the participation rate our first year?
About 30%.
So we went from 30 to about 40.
Yeah, we're hoping for 40. It's interesting now that a lot of individuals are starting to file their taxes. We're seeing like a resurgence of applications now. There was a lull over the holidays, and now we're seeing, I think there were, in the last two weeks, another 12, 13 applications came in, where we had gone maybe a two- or three-week period with none. So we're hoping to get a 40% participation rate, the way things are trending right now. Clearly, we're ahead of last year's pace.
Right. I'm just wondering, like, are we not being conservative enough with the 50% participation rate? I mean, there isn't, because this is such a new program, there isn't a lot of history to fall back on. So, you know, how are you coming up with that 50% participation goal, and the assumption that it's unlikely to be met?
Yeah, that was really what they call a wag, a wild guess. So, I mean, that was, that was just a hope that we could reach that 50% level, ratchet it up from the previous year, but not based on any kind of scientific analysis or anything like that.
But I think a 10% increase in one year of participation is really huge, and I think that's a credit to the outreach that you're doing, and then I think our commitment across the board of this program. And I think we've been targeted and strategic in how we've gotten the message out, so to local legislators, we've hosted events. local legislators, we've hosted events. You know, we're hoping to foster word of mouth by hand-delivering checks and knocking on people's doors and talking about the program. So I think we're deeply committed, and if we, if that's the result after year one, I think, we'll see, I think we could possibly get to that 50% next year. And then in that case, what would we want the program to look like?
I would think that also if the amount of money that you could get back is greater, there'd be more incentive to apply. Although the people that do get it are very grateful to have it and are appreciative of our efforts.
Well, it would seem to me that probably the best generator of this is word of mouth. And the more people who sign up are going to be the more people to be ambassadors for the program itself. So I'm thinking that 50% seems like a pretty solid goal for us to try to hit, going out to the community and, and get people involved and get people in the know about this program and get them excited about it, so.
Reflecting on the last two years of delivering checks, hearing from community members, especially when we meet with particular groups, to hear from constituents, to, to meet them on their doorstep and realize how important this is, that's one thing for us to pat ourselves on the back and say it's innovative and whatever else. It's great to have the Inquirer cover this. But at the end of the day, and especially now with our new board members, highly recommend, you know, to hand-deliver some of those checks and get to know our community members. I think that's something that the entire community can be very proud of. We're fortunate as a community with their tax rate where it is, fifth lowest out of 21. And though taxes continue to go up, there's an aspect that we do have to look out for those who have more limited means and who've probably been a part of the community for a long time. So I like the idea of, you know, attaining that 50% level for the rebate. I'm still interested in, in hearing more of my colleagues' opinions on the supplemental, because this is something that I, I feel is one representative of the community. You know, we have a healthy fund balance. We have a double A, one Moody's bond rating, right? One of 19 double A or triple A in the whole state of 500 districts. I think it's important for us, even if I see this number at 260, almost $268,000, I think that's our community investing in itself and making sure we take care of those in need.
So I, in essence, I want to echo most of what Mr. McBane was saying. I do think that trying, because of when you look at those income thresholds for renters, I do feel that it's important that we try to find a way to extend a little bit more of a benefit to the program to them, which is not to say I, I don't want to entertain the idea of looking at the supplements. I'm wondering if maybe we might want to consider a little bit more modest than the 40% increase, maybe more of like a 35% increase, and then maybe consider the supplements as sort of a, bit of a hedge, yeah, I wouldn't say compromise, I know that we're in fierce debate over this. But, you know, I, I certainly think that there's a valid argument to be made that, that, you know, both constituencies could use and can benefit from the program. At the same time, we do have a deficit we are working to, to, to address. So to be able to increase the program and add those supplements, I think, together, would be something that I'd be interested in talking a little bit more about.
So I am in line with what Mr. Fusco just said, I, and also what Mr. Casa said about investing in our community. And candidly, to start the conversation, I would be in favor of both at this point. And I would be in favor, I think that moving to the 40% and the supplemental, just the whole package, would send a message from the board. And I see it as a major investment. And with the other things that the board, the initiatives were undertaking, I think that it would be small compared to the rest of it. So I would support both.
I also support both.
Just based on this table, it looks like a 10% increase with supplements equates to approximately about a $50,000 at 50%. Looking between 30 and 40, and 40 and 50.
It'd be about $70,000 more than budgeted this year.
Right.
Right. It would be about $50,000 more than the 30% with supplements.
Right. So I'm saying as we increase the consideration 10%, it's about a 10, approximately about a $50,000 consideration, if we're, including the supplements in the conversation.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Just for like numbers and context.
Yep. So if we reach our 50% participation level for next year, again, it's a lofty goal, but if we do, and then we have a 40% rebate factor and include supplements, the budget amount would be $214,377. So roughly $70,000 more than what we have budgeted this year. But again, this year, our budgeted funds won't be expended because we're not going to hit that 50% goal that we had this year.
And that's $70,000 extra is such a small percentage of our, what, projected $285 million budget, correct?
As, as Mrs. Johnson hears me say quite often, that's a rounding error for us.
Right. It's just, across the Commonwealth, local taxes are an issue. We are fortunate enough as a community to be able to address it. And I, I think it's time, you know, I've said this before, we're North Penn, we lead, and this is an opportunity to do that. And we, this is a chance to send a message that we actually want to protect local homeowners and taxpayers.
And this is about $1 per average, for, for average homeowner in the area, right?
So I'm hearing the majority of the board support a 40% rebate amount, continuing to include renters, continuing to include hybrid properties, adding in the supplements, resulting in about a $214,000 budget for next year. Is that summarized?
That sounds about right. And if there isn't any other need for discussion, can we have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's your guidance.
Thank you. We'll have this on next Thursday's action meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you. I believe that's it for the finance agenda. So just to summarize what we're moving forward, it's the one item, on the tax rebate plan. And that is it. I guess we have another opportunity for public comment, but on that, we're finished with our presentations.
We do. There's another opportunity for public comment. There's also a work session meeting that's happening immediately after, where there will be yet another opportunity for public comment. If you're here to comment about something on that particular agenda, you're going to have your opportunity in about three minutes. I was going to say that now. Anybody at this time would like to comment on issues related to the finance agenda? Okay, seeing none. Any other business? In that case, can I have a motion to adjourn? All right? We're adjourned.[1783.83]